As we move into our agenda, the first item is a consent agenda. Approval of the council meetings to the regular meeting of November the 15th of 2011, and a special meeting of December 1st, 2011. The agenda had said that we would be approving the meeting minutes from the December 6th minutes, however, I understand those are not ready. So we'll be approving those two minutes. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. Second by Mr. Perkel. Any discussion? Changes or amendments? If not, I move for the question. All those in favor of the approval of consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now then to deliberation agenda. Item number one. We've scheduled to conduct a drawing for a free nonprofit organization access to the Granberry Resort and Conference Center. I understand that there's been some nonprofits that have were not notified or didn't receive notice on this.
Yeah, I'll take responsibility for that. We contacted the nonprofits that we knew about. Turns out, there's 120, 130 of them in the county. And so, we didn't contact all those people. And some people have raised the issue that we might ought to do it a little differently. So, we're going to run an advertisement in the paper. I mean, we, you know, trying to get documentation on all the different ones that might be out there. So we'd like to table that if possible, and we'll go back and try again.
Mayor, can I say something on that?
Yes, please.
I had called Mike Scott with the Chamber, because I got the list too, of about 15 organizations. And Mike has actually sent me over a two-page list of several organizations, even the Chamber's name wasn't even on there. And I'd like to see us do a, maybe an hour workshop, or two-hour workshop, on that, and go through all the names and stuff on it before we put it back on the agenda.
Alright, I will certainly entertain that, but I need to entertain a motion to table this, or would we need to move it?
I'll make a motion to be tabled this.
Motion made by Mr. Hewitt, seconded by Mr. Perkel. Tabled to...
Not the next panel meeting, what was it?
The one on the 17th? January 17th?
The, I think it's 20th. No, 17th, correct.
17th. So I have a motion and a second to move item number one to the meeting of January the 17th, 2011. Any discussion?
So I just want to make sure I understand that the problem with this issue was that the nonprofits, as Mr. Allen has made clear, several of them didn't even know it was going to take place. So, this will be done by staff, they'll put something in the paper, they'll put it out, so everybody will get opportunity to put their name in the hat. And then how will you address Mr. Allen's situation about, I guess, Mr. Allen, are you wanting to educate the nonprofits on the process, or what is your goal in that?
I'd like to educate the campus.
And you'd like to see the process different than what has been brought forward? Because I agree that there needs to be maybe even a different type of process in place. Because the more I talk to these nonprofits, the more I find that some of them are very well happy with having something on Thursday night, where some of the others say, no, we have to have a weekend. So if we do this lottery process, we're in fact going to just limit that few to, well, you get three during the week, and you get three on the weekend. So I'm asking that we develop some other type of process, and that may be what the workshop's for?
That's correct. I think it, for instance, one of the nonprofits, it was the Boys and Girls Club, which I'm on the board, I'm not sure, and we'll have a meeting tomorrow and I'll find out, but I'm not sure we'd need the conference center. And there is, I just feel like, United Way, the Jewel Ball, Chamber Commerce. There's a lot of organizations that puts a lot of money back into the county, and into the city. So I think we should have a workshop and go through it. There's been several people asking, and this is not on agenda, Mayor, but, you know, saying, well, can we get a better deal, or, you know, can we pay for the table calls? Can we pay for the silverware, clay and cleanup, and maybe get a cheaper deal? I think it's something we need to look at, and I don't think that we can do it...
Well, possibility is, we thought it was a good idea when we put it into the budget process, that maybe it's not received the way we were hoping it would be, and maybe we'll just amend the budget and do away with the free nights, anyway.
That's not, that's definitely not my goal, Mayor. That's definitely not my goal.
That's a possibility, though.
Possibility.
So anyway, I will call for the question.
So just explain to me what the process is going to be here, so...
I would assume that the management, manager will get back with us regarding a workshop. I think they understand that's what you're looking for. So, manager will get back with you on that workshop, possibly including the nonprofits, and we'll go from there.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, question, item one, to table till the second meeting in January, January the 17th of 2012. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. On to item number two, to consider and approve a contract with Careflight for the continued provision of optional memberships to the city's utilities customer for $1 per month, added to the utilities bills. Manager?
We had Jim Schwartz here, he's here, he's president of Careflight, he would like to address this.
Welcome, Jim. We're glad you're here tonight. We appreciate you being in Granberry, and been a good citizen here for a number of years, and we appreciate the good you've done for our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor of town, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. Always a pleasure to get out of the Metroplex, take a little ride, it's a beautiful sunset tonight on the drive down. I'm really primarily here to answer questions. Careflight's membership includes its helicopter service within 150 miles of DFW, its ground ambulance service, including 911 wherever it's offered, which for example is in Johnson County and Hill County, and its fixed wing service within 500 miles. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that anyone has. It's been a very good process. I spoke to you all about a year ago, there was some uproar in the helicopter market, as many of you may recall. And I'm happy to report that over the past 12 months, our business from the facility at the airport here has been up about 20 percent, which is a surprising result from my perspective, but a good one. I'd be glad to answer any questions that anybody has.
Any questions from council?
So am I hearing you say, Mr. Schwartz, that you're actually with two competing helicopter services, you're seeing that your company is actually increasing runs?
Yes, we're about 20 percent ahead through the end of November.
Alright.
You know, the older I get, the less I know.
What do you contribute that to?
I think we're much busier in Somerville County than we were before. I think that when that company left down there, they left a bad taste in a lot of people's mouths, and I think that probably was the factor.
And you're still based in operation over airport, and that relates to...
Yes, oh yes, oh yes.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So this program has been in effect since 2009, and what last week were... For the December meetings, we approved a similar agreement with Texas EMS, and...
And this is just continuing the process we already have on the utility bill, we're already charging the dollar.
Already charged.
And this is just improves the documentation on the plan, and continues, we just wanted to make sure that we had the continued support from Careflight on that.
Alright, now there is an opt-out, there is an opt-out provision. Explain that to us, if you would.
Well, we sent out a notice to all residential users, this is residential coverage, that they had the ability to opt-out. And they, in fact, in that opt-out notice, it showed both EMS and Careflight. So we were, you know, because they were being charged for both. We've had response back, some people have, some people have not, so let's continue.
Well, Mayor, and too, we've clarified this before, but it's just so important, because people, especially people in the city who have agreed to stay in, they're going to get charged $2, $1 from each service. But, the fact is, that folks that don't have that kind of agreement, if one helicopter picks them up, and they happen to be belonging to another, Jim, is that correct? They're going to get charged.
Right.
So our citizens actually, by participating like this, are covered completely in this county, is that correct?
That's right.
Alright.
There being no further discussion, I'll consider a motion to approve a contract with Careflight for the continued provision of optional memberships to the city's utility customers for $1 per month, added to their utility bills.
So moved, Mayor.
Councilman Tyre makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda item number three.
Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, appreciate it. Agenda item number three, discuss and consider the contract with the Hudson Creative Group, Inc. Our current contract expires on December 31st of 2011, and to discuss alternate approaches to the upcoming advertising campaign for the remainder of the current fiscal year. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, tonight, we're gonna, what has happened? We have hired a new Director of Communication and Marketing. Her name is Shauna Smith Snyder. She's been here two weeks now, and during this two-week period, she's worked very hard on evaluating our current marketing plan that was underneath the Hudson Group contract. She's going to come forward and make a presentation tonight. Rick, do we have it set up, or we can do it on screen? She, and I've reviewed it as well, we basically have a recommendation to the council as to how we should proceed. This is just an evaluation of the current marketing plan, this is not a development of the new marketing plan necessarily. We still have things we have to determine, but there was a need to evaluate the current Hudson Group contract, because it expires on December 31st. And in this presentation, you'll see the recommendation, I'll turn it over to Shauna.
Would you all please join in in welcoming Shauna Smith Snyder to the City of Granberry staff?[689.32][689.32](APPLAUSE). Thank you very much, Shauna.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and thank you so much for your time tonight. As Wayne had already mentioned, upon starting at the City of Granberry, one of my very first projects was to take upon the evaluation of our current marketing plan and strategy, especially because the Hudson Creative Group contract was expiring December 31st. And since the city staff and the Hudson Group knew that I would be contributing my own skillset to the department, I was asked to look at alternative approaches to the strategy and to the budget for the remainder of the current fiscal year. Therefore, I'd like to move forward with the review of your current services being provided to the City of Granberry by the Hudson Creative Group. They have been your marketing arm of the city when a communications director has not been present, and we definitely thank them for that. They have delved in and done public relations, graphic design, social media, photography, recaps, media buying, and placements. Also on the contract is listed B-roll and a media tour. The first contract listed as the base marketing plan for 2012 was based on the budgeted amount of $285,000. Then in researching back, I found that there was enhanced marketing plan developed for Granberry that included additional advertising placement, that included additional advertising placements, a Phase Two website, five monthly magazine show, and a smartphone app once the funds became available at $115,000, bringing the total of the proposed contract to $400,000. Moving on, as I have researched and drawn on my past experience, my proposal is to diversify Granberry's marketing mix by going with more of a team concept, and I'm going to break that down for you, and show you what I mean by that. Moving on to the next slide, as we advance here, here's the breakdown of your total marketing mix by cost, based on the current contracts that I was provided and speaking about earlier. The one on the left is what you're currently spending by each service. The placement category, I found two numbers that brought the total to over 107, so I'm assuming the funds had to be reallocated to fit the new and current budget. And I was made aware today that there was not a commission fee in the placement with the Hudson Group, so that's why I put placement at approximately 95, or, excuse me, $97,000. Now, my suggestion for the future, and moving forward with myself on staff, and looking to do more with the team concept and more in-house, is to consider Tucker and Associates for Granberry's public relations. So we're moving on to the second column to the right, for a future suggestion and more of a team concept. They specialize in strictly public relations, for travel and tourism, for cities, lifestyle and consumer products. They were established in 1999, and their headquarters is out of Dallas. Their clients include or have included Hyatt Hotels, The Grand America in Utah, Wildcatter Ranch, Irving, Texas, Plano, Texas, Beaumont, Texas, Cancun, Mexico, Interstate Batteries, and the Cayman Islands, just to name a few. They will charge a retainer fee of $2,500 per month, and their media admission fee for the Texas client representation and press kit build-out, bringing that to a total of $35,000 for the year. As for graphic design, I am recommending that I take on some of the basic projects in-house, especially for some of the online graphics that have been done by agency before, and that we consider a local Granberry firm, Envision Creative Services for additional design, additional and extensive design work. For example, an annual report, which I will be showing you in just a moment, meeting planner's guide, print ads, new brochures, and pop-up banners for trade shows, etc. I have confirmed with Envision that 8,500 will include the retainer fee and will cover previously stated design needs and more. As for social media, many of you know that that is one of my specialties, and I plan to save those funds and propose that we reallocate those, as you will see in just a moment, by taking social media management completely in-house. As for photography, I would like to keep the Hudson Creative Group intact for this portion, because I feel it is important to build up our stock of quality high-res images for ads and other needs. And they've done a great job with photography in this area to date. I've also added a little bit to that fund, because I feel that they've done a great job of online promotions, and with myself being over Granberry TV, communication, marketing, tourism functions, a lot of those responsibilities, I feel that it would be beneficial to renegotiate that portion of our contract, to assist with those, as well as the transition portion of this phase right now. B-roll, we have the use of two HD cameras at Granberry, at the Granberry TV studio. Therefore, as we bring on staff or college interns in the future, I would like to make full use of the equipment that we have here in the city, as well as the talent that we already have here in-house, to shoot that footage. As for placements, as I am in my position longer, I would like to reevaluate what we have done in the past for advertising placements, over the course of, especially the next two weeks, and what we will do for the remainder of 2012. So, lastly, what you're seeing for media tour, the $5,000 for the media tour or your press trip, that is what Tucker recommends at a city budgets. Bringing your total after looking at additional in-house and local services to $63,500, with an additional estimated $83,500 for your placements, $147,000. Going on to slide five, I was also asked to take a look at your management fees, the analysis of that. What you're seeing on the left is the, I was presented with a branding contract of what the portion was going to the agency, and that's what you're seeing there. On the right, with the proposed team concept, Tucker would receive $35,000, that's not the $5,000 that's going to host the journalist or your media trip, that's going, that comes out of our cost, that's not going to agency. Envision and Hudson would receive an estimated total of $23,500, and with only my time or my staff's time going towards social media and B-roll footage. So that would be completely done in-house. For Phase Two of the website, I have opted not to do that currently, or a redesign of the website, but would reevaluate mobile websites or an app in the future. So your estimated total of that would be $58,500. Moving on to slide six, you're, taking your $400,000 minus $147 brings you to $253,000. It is a savings, however, my proposal is that it is a savings to be reallocated for other needs within the tourism budget. First of all, immediately, I can see that we can do a new design of a promotional annual report, and the printing for this. And this will be for all city departments, as that is one of my responsibilities, is to do communications for the entire city and promote all of Granberry. And it's unlike anything we've ever done before. It'll be approximately 10 to 20 pages, it'll be colorful, will not be your traditional thick annual report, showcasing the positive things that have occurred in our city over the past year within each department, as well as stats, finances, and other information. We will also cover additional printing costs for new materials, and we'll shop local. Additional or new advertising placements, we'll be able to look at that with the reallocation of these funds, and additional design work, if need be. The sales and database tracking software for our future sales position is definitely needed, and that will not only be beneficial for that position, but will also be beneficial for the conference center staff, myself, and media. I'm sorry? Oh, okay. The visitor center, and tracking what we do in there as well, and event permits, and I know that's been a big issue there. It will also be, it'll be a win-win for all. Moving on, looking into and attending new trade shows and making sales calls within our department, we will be doing the ABA, American Bus Association, in two weeks, and then doing Southwest Showcase at the end of January to target meeting planners and the meetings market for Granberry. And those are just two that are on the upcoming radar, to really get Granberry's name out there. We'll also be able to do new promotional items to better service our groups, and these funds will allow us to do co-op marketing programs, or look into doing co-op for potentially our region, and to develop those partnerships within the city and within our region. It's very important to, in my opinion, to reallocate and utilize these funds to effectively promote Granberry and to the outside world, and to continue to spread the word about Granberry and how, what a wonderful place it is, and promote tourism, whether it's to leisure visitors, family reunions, convention groups, board retreats, any type of visitor, in my opinion, is welcoming Granberry. And we need to make sure that these groups know what we have to offer here, and where to come. And I think that we can all agree that they bring, when they come to Granberry, they bring outside dollars into our city and into our economy. So, that's very important, and every little group that comes in, every little bit really does matter, and really does count. That being said, the recommendation, here are my recommendations, taking everything into consideration. We do not renew the Hudson Group contract as is, however, we renegotiate, or we negotiate separate contracts with the Hudson Creative Group, Tucker and Associates, and Envision Creative Design, and continue to develop additional capabilities in-house, utilizing city staff and city talent. And lastly, I will continuously to come back and evaluate our plan, and see how everything is performing, being on staff. So, lastly, glimpse into the future. The first graphic you can see is a mock-up of the 2012 annual report cover that Envision Creative Services designed when submitting their bid, and that's what I explained earlier. And the graphic on the right would be an ad that we just placed in Texas meetings and events for their 2012 winter issue. We changed up the copy just a little bit, I know the top graphic was placed before, but we changed it just a little bit to better fit the meetings market here, and just a couple of things that we are working on in our department, so I wanted to put that in there and showcase that. So, that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions from the council?
Yes, I have several, Mayor. Just looking down here, the first one I had, since we stopped the slides, and by the way, that was an awesome presentation, and thank you very much.[1386.12][1386.12](APPLAUSE). The, there's a lot of transitioning going on at the city, and tourism, promotion's a big part of that, and obviously, being here is really exciting, to see it happen. The few things that I've made some points on, as I looked at this in my packet, in the last slide, you showed, you showed Granberry meetings with a view, and it's awesome, because you're actually showing the 20,000 square foot of our resort conference center. When I read the bullet points, I didn't see any promotion or anything that advertised or promoted that we have a Hilton Garden sitting in walking distance of it. The reason I bring this up is because obviously, what you said is very important. We bring people here for more than one night, they're going to stay in hotels or eat in restaurants, it's going to be good for all of us. We're excited about that. The fact is that this council right here was in Houston in October, at the conference center in Houston. We stayed in a Hilton, and there was a hotel right next to it, it's connected, and they use that as a drawing card to get people there. Before you got here, there was talk about making the Hilton our draw, there's a headquartered hotel, or whatever the wording should be right. Tell us your philosophy, or what you've seen in that, as far as, it looks like it's done in other cities, obviously, those are big-scale situations, ours is a smaller scale, but it looks like it would work. So do you see any benefit in promoting that Hilton name along to get people here?
I definitely see the benefit in promoting a hotel within walking distance to the conference center. In my past experience, I have, it's been a very difficult situation to not favor one or over the other. So, as I'm in Granberry longer, I need to take more time to see how those relationships play out, and what is the best situation or promotion for all. So that is a placement that had already been purchased...
Oh, okay.
...before my time on staff, but there were some bullet points that I felt were a little bit redundant, so I wanted to change the copy on there, and just make sure that we showcase that we have the facilities, we had hotels, we had the conference center, we had bed and breakfast, if you'd like to use those, versus, you know, another hotel. So, that's why we went with that type of copy versus another type, but it'll take a little bit of time to kind of look into the relationships with all of the hoteliers, and that is something that is on my agenda. I actually have a meeting with a couple of hoteliers tomorrow, and so, I'm getting out there, I can definitely assure you of that, so, so we can make those relationships with the hoteliers.
Thank you. Could you tell me, in your presentation, you spoke about two items that you had on your radar, coming up, you know, I guess, very soon, where you're going to be promoting small conferences, or actually just selling our conference center, getting out there. What two shows is that, where are they located at, and tell us what dates those are going to be?
The first one is called ABA. It is the American Bus Association, and I feel that while the motor coach market is probably not our primary market, it is still a very, it's still a pertinent portion, it can still be considered to be part of our market, and it will be held in great minds. And what's very interesting about ABA is typically it's held nationwide. This is the, I'm trying to think in its past history if it's been in Texas, but it will not rotate back to Texas in quite a while. So we thought that it was very economical for Granberry to go, for the day trip, to do the appointments with the tour operators. And so, we will actually get our list back tomorrow with what appointments made, be happy to share that with any one of you, with how many appointments actually made. And Pat will actually be doing that portion, because she's very familiar with Granberry. So that's the first one, that will be January 8th, that she will be doing that one. The second one is Southwest Showcase. It's a very popular trade show for the meetings market, and it's all size, all sizes of meetings, but you can focus on the small meetings market, which fits Granberry very, very well, and that's what we're going to be focusing on and targeting for those meeting planners. We also, or in my past experience, typically do sales calls before, in the Austin area, and so that's something that I'm hoping to map out very soon. So, sales calls probably Wednesday, the 25th, I believe, of January, and the trade show will be the 26th.
Thank you so much. The, when you talk about negotiating new contracts, I know you weren't here, but they listed the minutes of the past meeting in October, how this was tabled, and that's why we're here tonight. And our city manager's been on a fast track, and Wayne, thank you so much for moving this forward and getting it done. So you're actually going to negotiate those contracts, and I saw this in-house stuff being, the savings blow me away, so, for what we're getting there. And then you're talking about reallocation of those funds, because we did, we committed at this workshop in the summer, we added $115,000 more dollars to promoting tourism, that's $400,000 total. So we'll have that money setting, and you all will make these decisions coming up in the future to bring that forward, as you see events, or hire new salespeople, or whatever that is. Is that correct?
Correct. I can go back to that. That listing is what I'm hoping, just in the last week's time, of things that I can see, being very, very beneficial to Granberry, and in my past experience of what I've done in the tourism world, and kind of setting up a sales staff, setting up communications staff, you know, so, sorry. And going forward from there. So, that is what I'm hoping to do, yes, with those funds, and more, actually. The Tucker price has already been set, however, nothing has been signed. I've just already gotten prices, so that I could put this presentation together for you all tonight.
So you are looking for approval, Wayne, on this dollar amount tonight, so that you can get started?
Right, we would like to have approval to go forward with $147,000 and negotiate those contracts with those three companies, so that we can proceed. And then we'll come back to you with a marketing plan, probably in middle of February or something. We need to take some time and really think through the marketing plan itself. But you'll be getting the same level of support from Shauna as you were going to get from that.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Stanley, thank you so much.
No problem.
I have, Mary.
Any other questions, Mr. Hullett?
Got two here. The 107,000, 47,000, that, that was already in our budget anyway. That was part of the 400,000.
Well, it's all in the budget.
Okay.
Even when we come back to the marketing plan.
That's all budget, too.
All right. The only thing I got, Shawna, first off, thank you for being here. Real proud to have you here. I know you're gonna get things rolling, everybody in this county. And we're real pleased with that. Know you do a great job.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Back to Mitch is still here. When he's talking about the Hilton Hotel. I've had, I've been on here now about a year and a half. I've had several people ask me, you know, I'd be at a convention or something or a DML meeting or whatever, and I'd say something that we had a Hilton next door. And they say, I can't believe you got a Hilton in Granbury, Texas. You know, that's small. So, you know, you look at what we're, they spent millions of dollars for Omni, Dallas. That dude spent a million dollars. But I think that's what, you know, we'd love to, you know, I know I would love to be look at it to see what you think. We don't wanna hurt any of our other bed and breakfasts or our other hotels and motels in this town. So it is a thin line there, I know.
Sure.
The other thing is, back on the pictures that you were talking about there earlier in your proposal. Who owns, I know we got into this with Hudson Group one time, but who owns the pictures that they've already taken?
From my understanding in the conversations I've had in the past two weeks, we own them, but we have to make sure that we put photographer's credit every time that we use the photo. And that's standard, just making sure it's on the ad. And, and we are able to use them in any way that we see fit. And I did get that in documentation this week, that we are able to use them anytime we see fit. But we did not take the photos. So we just have to make sure the appropriate credit line is there by, by Hudson or Hudson Group or Brian Hudson. So that is my understanding right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. So, Mr. Manager, you're asking for a soft vote or an approval of this rearranging? Or what is it you're looking for?
Well, we would just like approval to go negotiate those contracts with those three companies and take it to the mayor for signature without coming back to the council for those dollar amounts.
Mayor, I think if the city manager is okay with that specific number of 147,000?
Actually, that's not, he just indicated he wants three contracts. And those, the three contracts, and they're not, do you have those amounts on top?
I do.
Top there for me?
There's the, the recommendation going back.
63,000.
Uh, the management, management.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
We, we wanna go and negotiate. Yeah, we wanna go and negotiate with Tucker for 35,000. We wanna go and negotiate with Envision and Hudson for the 23,500. Now, was there another 5,000 that Tucker was not, was already in the 35,000?
Well, the, the retainer fee for Tucker and Associates is 2,500 a month. Then, and then the media, it's not a media tour. It's for the Texas, the Texas clients. So bringing you to the 3,500. And then the 5,000 is what our cost would be. No, it's just, we just need to make sure we budget.
We just want public relations with Tucker for 35 and Envision and Hudson.
Right.
23,500.
So if, you know, and again, I'm thinking about negotiations. I don't wanna handicap your negotiations, the city manager's negotiations fund. So we throw these figures out there and, you know, so I would like to, Mayor, I'd like to, if it's appropriate, to allow our staff, because they do have a budget, to allow them to move forward with negotiations as guidelines? Or do you have any counsel on that as guidelines? Does that be something that would be appropriate?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. Well, then let me, let me just, let me, let me ask, let me ask the city manager.
How about a motion that says they're, authorize them to negotiate contracts with Tucker and those other threes with a maximum amount of 58,500?
I think, that's good, Mayor. Okay. I'd like, Mayor, I'd like the move that we approve the current contracts that are put before the city staff up to a total of 58,500.
To approve, to allow the city manager to negotiate those contracts?
Yes.
But they're not in, not in.
Right, correct.
Is that understood?
Understood.
Do you want, does, Mr. Hullett, you wanna throw, you wanna throw the wording out there?
Well, the way the wording, I, I look at it is we should go ahead and make a motion that we, that we not accept the current contract with the Hudson Group and go with negotiations of the exit, the, the new contracts out there. But first of all, we do, because of what, the way it reads, that we have to accept or not accept or not approve the current contract with the Hudson Group. Is that right?
Yeah, and that looks like two motions. You can get two motions out of this one agenda item. So with that said, then I would, the first motion is simple. I move that we do not move forward with the contract with the Hudson Creative Group that was presented to us in October 1st meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye. And then I would entertain a motion to authorize city manager to enter in negotiations with the Hudson Group, Tucker Association, and Envision Creative Design for contracts not in excess of 58,500.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hullett. Make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Allen. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Most in pass. Any opposed? Item number four. Thank you, Shane. Appreciate it very much. We're excited you're on board. You and city manager to be commended for quick action and quick thinking. And we pray that the good use of our dollars will increase our tourism traffic by a bunch. Item number four, consider and approve a transfer agreement with the Brazos River Authority in conjunction with the Act of Municipal Utility District, Johnson County Special Utility District, and the City of King to take over ownership of the Saltwater Area Treatment Service Plant located on Matlock Road and authorize the city manager to sign the final agreement. Oh, be the mayor. Okay, yeah. And authorize the, the mayor to sign the final agreement. Is Alva here? Alva, would you give us a little history of the Swat's plant and our involvement with them? And a little bit about how that affects our water and then what this contract proposes to do?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll kind of make it a little bit deeper, but I'll go back a little bit. We started off with four entities with the Swat's plant, all four partners. Again, different percentages. Our percentage was 12% of this plant total. It was Johnson County Fresh, Johnson County Rural at the time, now Special Utility District, AMUD, and ourselves. Obviously, Johnson County Fresh or Rural became Johnson County Utility District. And they actually took in Johnson County Fresh. And then I believe about 2002, City of King joined the participants. So again, we were back to four partners and that's where we're at currently. In 2000, roughly about 2007, we, or actually before that, actually about 2002, the city started looking at different options. Starts with water treatment plants, drilling wells, things like this. Because the, the water act from the Swat's plant was very expensive. We were looking at at that time about $14 per thousand, which obviously twice as much as what we charge our citizens. As time went on, we kept looking at different things. Finally, you know, everybody started looking, okay, you know, must be time. We're gonna have to build a plant. So basically what happened in 2007, we decided to sell our water rights out to AMUD. And how we did that was in increments. In 2007, actually in 2009 was the first increment that came out, which was a half million gallons a day. And then the original contract was 2011 would be another half. And then in 2014 would be the rest of our allocation. However, as things went on, our plant, you know, we weren't ready for that part production-wise. So we went back to AMUD, asked to amend the contract, which we did. And AMUD agreed to it. We actually, at that time, pushed it back to 2014 for the next allotment that they would take. And then 2007. And that kind of puts us where we are currently. Well, there's been discussions, actually probably more so with AMUD and Johnson County, with Brazos River Authority about actually taking over the water treatment plant. And so basically what they've done is they've put in a PUA, or Public Utility Agency is what they've done. They formed actually through legislation of what they've done to form it. Now, what this PUA will do is they will come in and they can, they have the ability to issue bonds just like City of Granbury, AMUD independently or something like that. And that's where they're at now. So what they've done is they've agreed to their transfer with BRA, with Johnson County Fresh, I mean Johnson County SUD, and AMUD as being the primary, I guess, board members of the PUA. And so that's kind of where we're at now. Now, once this takes place, as far as our agreement with AMUD, as far as, you know, what I went through a minute ago, about the 2014 dates, 2017 dates, those will still stay in place as far as on the cost, or as far as on our actual contract. So we're not gonna lose our water rights. Our water rights will stay with us until 2017 as planned as before. What will happen though is, basically now what's gonna happen is they're going to refinance the bonds. We had 1997 series bond and we had a 2001 series bond. Combined, you're looking at roughly about $240,000 savings as far as the reissuance. Obviously, when the bonds were taken out '97 and were taken out 2001, the interest rates were, were pretty high. Now, roughly, should be around 3%, a little bit over, maybe 3% is what they're gonna refinance them at, or reissue the bonds at. So as far as in that manner, it's gonna help as far as, again, the 200 and something thousand dollars over, until 2017, once we finalize our contract with AMUD. And I'm, that's pretty much it, as far as that goes. But anybody have any questions?
The, this has not, we have 10,800 acre square feet of water rights in, in Lake Granbury. Is that correct?
We do.
And this has no effect on that water rights?
No.
This has merely to do with treated water coming from the Swat's plant?
Yes, sir. It is treated.
But the water coming out of the Swat's plant is against that allocation of 10,800 acre feet, right?
No, only part of that is. Actually, I believe, if I'm going by memory here, about 2,000 acre feet roughly would be to that allocation over there. It's 1.72 million gallons a day that we actually, as far as we had total allocation. So you're probably looking at over, a little over about 2,500 acre feet probably. But we'll keep that. We don't lose that 2,500 acre feet. We still keep our 10,800 acre feet total.
Mr. English, do you have anything to comment on?
No, just to say that this has certainly been an argumentous process. You know, I did my hat to the President, Board, as well as everybody in trying to come together and have terms on the same. Also, we want to salute BRA for coming to the table back in the late 80s. At a time when we really needed an alternate water resource up in Grand Canyon. You know, they, they were able to facilitate with this plant together, a very essential service for this community. So I do salute them for that. But we've all grown since then. We're quite capable of operating the facility now. And so we certainly see that any cost savings, not only on refunding on debt service, but also on the cost of all of it. Because under the current contract with BRA, we pay them a management fee, well, as you know, administrator, which is funds that go for work, wait till we ever, BRA's incident. We feel like a lot of services that they do provide, we can provide as much as we're called. As a result, we're saving for all of our great players. So we're really looking forward to getting this deal done. And it will be operated by the PUA. Both AMUD and Johnson County SUD will have reference on the board of directors, which will provide the oversight.
Well, I think AMUD has proven themselves to be providers of great utility service and we appreciate what you do. Mr. Manager, would you please tell us what the financial, the impact of the city's financial statements will be from this revision?
Well, the impact will be that on the debt service that we would have been paying. We will save, save that 240,000 over the next four years, or five years, I think it is. And so that is a big plus. Plus, the fact that we're, we're not gonna be paying BRA the management fee and that they are able, we're expecting to see the O and M, the operation management costs, go down. So we're expecting to save money on that. We don't know how much yet because we don't know how efficiently they can operate the system. But the real plus is that what we do is we move the debt off of our balance sheet. So we're going to be leveraging with off-balance-sheet financing, which is a real benefit to us because it helps our debt ratios. And when we get into that type of thing, we help ourselves be upgraded in terms of ratings to have lowered our debt. We're simply purchasing water now. We don't owe anybody money for the Swat's plant anymore. We are essentially purchasing water from this PUA. And so that's a big plus for us as a city.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor, is there any legal issues that we need to be aware of?
I'm comfortable with the agreement primarily because we have other agreements in place right now that deal with our transfer of water. And those agreements with AMUD aren't affected by this agreement.
Are there any, are there any extended environmental issues or any environmental problems or liabilities?
I'm not aware of any at this time.
I would entertain any questions from council, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Get the gentleman's name out there, but...
Mr. English?
Mr. Richard English. Is, uh, when, when will this system be up and running? And Wayne was talking about. And will our water rates actually go down? And how much will it go down to?
This is Richard English. He's the, what is it, executive director of AMUD?
The manager.
Okay.
The PUA itself is, does exist now. They're gonna have their initial organizational meeting is gonna be January 5th. So that's coming up quickly. A closing date for the transaction with BRA hasn't been set yet, but we're anticipating somewhere around an April timeframe, actually, for the closing.
I knew it'd been up and running, but I didn't understand Wayne's remark when he said, when we get the system up and going, our water rate might come down. What can we tell our citizens? We're paying 15, 30, I think it is, right now.
Well, it's, it's really, and I, and I don't know for sure what all you have in your packet. We did an analysis in turn, a profile and form analysis on O and M costs currently at Swat's under the BRA formula versus where it would be picking up day one under the PUA. There's some unknowns. We do need to hire a manager out at the plant. There's gonna be some costs associated with that. I can tell you that currently now, under BRA, the management fee and G and A combined is about 11% of the entire Swat's O and M budget. The initial 5%, which is management fees, that's just gone. It's not attributable to any services provided to Swat. That just goes away. The, of the other about 6% G and A, we're looking at those costs. We feel like we can trim those well down. And I believe on the exhibit we provided, we're looking, we're estimating about a 7, 7.5% reduction on O and M costs, which, which is, can be reflected directly on, on to the cost per thousand, as I say.
So, Tony, you will see as well, is like what you were referring to, like right now, I believe it's 12 something per thousand. Now, let's move the debt service a little. So debt service decreasing by probably not 30% or so, total cost of that. You're gonna see some offset for thousands, it will come down. And what that actually is, and then the pipe bridge referred to as far as on the O and M side, we know there's gonna be a 5% decrease far as on the, on the, far as G and A, things like that. But on the management fees, however, like again, depending on, you know, what we're looking at. So, you know, say we use the exact same water that we're doing right now, taking that off, you might be looking at $12, you might be looking at $10 per thousand or nine. True, Mayor.
One other question, and I didn't sit in here, but do we, we gotta buy so much water a month from Swat, Swat plant? Or we don't have to buy any of that?
No, we don't have to buy any of that. And you'll still have, and I had this discussion earlier a little bit, but if, if we use no water whatsoever, now that'll bring down the O and M costs, but you'll still have that debt service cost. It'll still be regardless. And that's the way it is right now.
Well, that's what I wanna talk about. Do we sell it to, because I went on to council. I was, Richard, I apologize. I just answered some questions. But the city actually sold it to, to y'all, is that correct?
That's correct.
But we're paying y'all. Y'all not paying us.
Well, no, actually, currently, we're paying, paying y'all.
Currently, they are paying us, right?
Okay. What's the, what's the 240, 240,000 we paying, who we paying that to?
That's, well, actually, that's gonna be the net savings is what that was. Actually, over four years, that'll be the net savings after the bond issuance, or the new bond issuance. So we'd actually save the 240,000, that's what that was, or Wayne was talking about.
We were paying that to BRA, if that's what you're saying.
But that has nothing to do with our 10,800 acre feet?
No.
No, no. That's gonna show you that.
Okay. So that has nothing to do with y'all, but I just got a question. Why, why are we paying BRA for something that we're not gonna be getting? We don't use any of their water.
What we were getting, I thought you said that what we were paying, we were paying, okay? We're not gonna be, we're gonna be paying the... We're not going to be, we're going to be paying the debt service.
Regardless.
Regardless. All right, and the amount, we're going to be purchasing water at a price that will be priced in with debt service.
Exactly, I, I understand, but my question is, Wayne, after the year of 2017, is the debt service down then?
No, no, there's nothing.
How about, how about 2014?
2014 will still be a percentage. Actually, it drops down, because A-Mud will take an extra half million gallons a day from us, so again, it will drop down with that.
Mayor, you, you were on to Counsel, did, I, I don't know what we sold it for, did we get good money for it, or?
I think we got, we got the deal that works best for all of us, which is allowing us to move out of the, uh, out of that system, which had that high bond cost and had the high management cost involved with it, uh, costing us $14 a gallon, moving into our own system, which we think will be operate, able to operate at a much cheaper price. Now that A-Mud's involved, we may not be able to, but, uh, previous to that, we were.
And, and they did, actually, one thing that was part of the agreement, uh, to kind of answer your question, was this, Tony, is actually, they did purchase the compensation from us, um, I don't think they gave the exact amount, but, uh...
It was around 500,000 dollars.
Yeah, roughly in that. And then also, uh, they took over our 14-inch line, and we obtained the new 12-inch line for, basically, so for all of us. So, it's kind of, how that worked out.
The, the questions I have, I have some for Richard. Just a second, okay, excuse me. Mr. Hugh, any questions?
I, I just had a question, Mayor. Ava, there is, uh, is there any hidden costs that you might see to putting this thing up in what, what I call up and running, uh, efficiently? Like, uh, or anything like, I mean?
It, it, it depends on me, far as, I mean, far as, obviously, I don't know.
I mean, you've looked at it, you know, and you're the expert on it.
Yes, I have. I have, I have looked at it. Um, it just depends on how, you know, again, when they get the manager in, how they, you know, how they run it. I mean, that, that's going to be a big impact on anything, and obviously, I'm going to have a different way that I do it than, or possibly, than the way that their manager, the way they would do it a little bit, possibly. But, um, you know, I mean, obviously, you can have that, so there's going to be costs associated just with, you know, just with philosophy, as far as how.
But it may or may not be transparent. You may have to make some changes, and it'll be...
Well, I, I will mention this, as far as how the plant's going to be run. What you will have moving forward is a manager that's 100% on-site. It's not going to be managed from Wakeup. So, there's going to be a, a more hands-on experience from management all the way from the operator. So, I, I see nothing but upside, regardless of how the plant will be operated in the future.
As I understand it, recently, the plant's being managed by their public relations person, is that correct?
I believe that's true.
Any questions, Perkel?
Yes, I'd like to know, is, uh, will Cleveland House be getting some of their water, or is it going to be sent to the paper about too much load, or going to switch their own line, or their own plant, or their own water? Is that, are you going to pick up another customer?
Uh, I certainly don't see that. Uh, you know, the Johnson County SUD is, has, has always had the majority capacity in this plant, and will continue to have majority capacity. Uh, in this transaction, they are converting key into a wholesale cut. So, we're keen to, but there's still going to be water through Johnson County SUD. I would come close to Johnson County SUD, working some range with the city of Cleveland, or have a mineral basis to help them out.
Anything else, Perkel?
So, Richard, obviously, I think you guys are way out in front of this water issue, and, and you're right, there's been issues that we've heard about. I just got on Counsel in 2009, but there, B.R.A., Swat, I've been hearing all about this, so I'm, I'm glad to see something moving forward. But obviously, we're not involved with that with you guys. That's something that you all are doing your own with Johnson County and, and that situation. Uh, what, what keeps on coming up is this debt service, and that'll be a question I'm going to ask Alba, but I've, I've never been able to get a good, firm answer on, okay, you guys are going to be operating the plant. B.R.A. has been controlling that plant, been running it from day one. Now, you all have worked out some kind of deal to get them out of the picture, and it'll be you and Johnson County decision makers will be running the plant, which is a great thing, the water experts. What do you guys imagine, I mean, has there been any negotiations at all as far as what we're going to be paying for water? Obviously, we'll be able to have the right to get, get that water, but you all will be setting the price. So, you know, I'm really concerned about what that price will be. Do we have any ballpark figures? And when I hear O-N-M, and when I hear debt service still going to be on our backs, it looks like, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're going to be paying that, but we'll be paying it in the per thousand cost per water. We're not going to be paying that debt service monthly.
Well, let me, let me, uh, explain that a little bit. Currently, what you do in the B.R.A. situation, you make debt service payments every month.
That's correct.
Apart and aside from O-N-M. That's probably not going to change. Okay, you're going to be making the monthly debt service payments. In this case, we'll be invoicing you for your proportion of share that you still owe, which is going to be less than what you owe, without a doubt, because there's going to be a savings, really considerable savings realized.
Yeah, but you're going to charge that invoice not as debt service, but as the cost of water.
Well, it is, yeah, you're going to have, you're going to have an O-N-M component, you're going to have, yeah, it's not going to be as, as a debt service, but that is, that is certainly...
We have no debt.
Right, it's each payment, the bonds are under our name.
Yeah, that would make sense.
It's a reimbursement type thing, so.
Okay, but, but again, I mean, and I appreciate reimbursement. And Richard, just for the record, I see an A-Mud board member out there that I know and appreciate. This is the first time that I've heard about this, when I got it in my packet on Friday. So, we've had so much going on about this Swat plant in the years, three that I've been here. And there's been a lot of things that were done, said, we're going to go this direction, because after all, the city of Granbury has operated our O systems on our own since early years. And so, then the B.R.A. thing came up, and they got involved in that, and they got out. And so, don't take this as anything personal, we're just trying to make sure, I'm trying to make sure, I may, I vote the right way to make the right decision. You said a while ago that we have, uh, April close date, you guys have an April close date, uh, because I'd really like to hear a little bit more about this whole system and about this debt service situation, because I understand you guys have the bonds in your name, but you're going to be invoicing us, so we're still going to be paying money out of our budget toward, we're going to be writing checks still. And so, I want the public to perceive, because I don't have my arms around it completely, and I've been listening to it and been involved with it for three years. So, uh, my goal tonight is to, to hear from you all and ask a lot of questions, and then we get together with our legal resources and, and our experts at the city, one-on-one, so we can actually, uh, get a little bit more information. Because I heard, starting Friday, that the debt service is going away. Well, then, when I started asking questions, I realized, oh, guess what is going? Won't be counted on our books, because it'll be on your books. But we're still going to be paying that in, that invoice every month, so we're still going to be making payments.
Right, right. Now, let me, let me, let me, let me cut it to the finer part of this.
Yes, yes.
In combination, uh, A-Mud, City of Granbury currently has 5.81 MGD capacity in Swat. Of that, Granbury currently has 1.22 MGD, the remainder is ours. We're responsible. We will be actually responsible for the entire 5.81 MGD and debt service associated with that. Uh, there's flow funds, we can pay pretty darn accurately what that number is going to be even at closing, in terms of principal amounts. May change a little bit depending on entrance, uh, as it goes with that closing. The bottom line is, though, you're still going to maintain the right to take some of that capacity, uh, after the closing date. You're still going to say, I have a right to pull 1.22 million gallons a day regardless. So, you've got to rent that capacity. And what it is, is it's going to be our cost for that capacity, you're just going to reimburse us for our cost for that capacity, which you're still going to maintain in their term.
Richard, is it fair to say that when you create more capacity in a plant, I mean, it's like you're operating, you still got the same amount of people, so the price should, it should drop the price down? We've seen that over and over.
It's certainly on the O-N-M side, actually.
It's certainly on the O-N-M side, it does that, for sure. But the debt service side, you're telling me it's going to stay the same?
The debt service is fixed, when the bond is issued.
Yes, of course. So, that's just going to be put into, so what I want to clarify, is that debt service going to be paid through us on a regular, monthly basis, uh, Wayne, or are we going to pay that when we draw water out through the per thousand cost?
Well, they're going to send us an invoice for water, in my mind, okay, not for debt service. And the debt service component is part of the pricing of the water, that's the way I look.
Does that sound, does that right? Does it, it kind of goes with what you're saying about the renting. You see why this is confusing, because you're right, we're going to be renting space for, if we take out 1.8 million or, or, you know, half million. So, we're going to be getting the invoice when we use water. The fact is, if we say, you know what, we've had a, you know, if we get a lot of rain and something happens, and our wells do well, like we say they're going to do, and we don't need that water, so we're not paying any water out from the, from the Swat's plant, how much money are we going to expect?
To your question, I am not going to book that to interest in principle costs, okay? I don't have any debt to book it to, okay? So, I've got to book it to a cost of purchase of a...
Yeah, I, I understand, I, I, we're moving it from this debt service into a purchase, I mean, I understand the concept.
I can't have debt service costs on, no debt service, so I'm going to book it as, as an expense for water.
So, let me ask, Richard, is that correct? And so, if we decide that, you know, we're doing really well, the wells are going good, we're on our plant for 2017, and we don't take any water out of that plant, are we going to write him a check or anything?
We still owe a cost of capacity.
For the debt service of that amount?
But not the O-N-M.
Yeah, that, that, that's my point, all right, I appreciate that.
But it's at a lower, it's at a lower, well, it is the cost of, of buying water from us, okay? And I'm going to book it as that, I'm not going to put it as, as a principal cost.
Sure, so it doesn't make any difference if we get one gallon or a million gallon?
You're going to owe a cer, yeah, our agreement is that we're going to pay you a certain amount of money for being able to purchase water from Swat.
And, and again, I want to make clear that the team at A-Mud and the team from Johnson County did a fantastic job of working with B.R.A. Now, they're buying out that plant, but they did some things that we heard a few years ago was impossible. So, I'm, I'm really excited for you, I guess. So, when I sit up here and hear all this, I'm saying, wait a minute, you guys are at the table, as city staff, with these folks, work out some kind of agreement, negotiate all that out, so it's going to be easy for us to go out and tell our constituents, hey, by the way, we're, we're going to be a lower war cost, or there's some positive to it. I mean, we got to really be able to say, this is black white, here's how we're going to save money here.
Well, I think, I think they've been fairly clear about that tonight.
We're going to save water on debt service costs and on O-N-M.
Yeah, you're looking at roughly, Mitch, you're, you're like, you're looking about almost 30% off the debt service itself. So, I mean, if you add that cost in, like I said, it's going to probably drop that roughly about $2, maybe $3 per thousand, if we use the same amount of water that we are today.
Yeah, and, and we can base that on what we've used last two, three, so what have you used last two, three years? What has been our, what have we taken out of Swat's plant on the average, last two, three years?
Um, this year was an anomaly, but, uh, normally about 75, 76 million gallons.
Okay, so we, we could, we could base something, we could base some kind of calculation on that.
Yeah, based off that, you could knock that off, and so, like, for, actually, last year, with the debt service and everything included, it was roughly like 12, 14 per thousand. So, you know, you'd be looking at about nine bucks per thousand.
Well, and, and I appreciate it, because what we want to do, I want to make sure that we don't hold these folks up, and we get this done, I know that, that we need to vote on this and get it done, so that, for them.
Moving forward, I'm, uh, looking for a motion to approve a transfer agreement with the Brazos River Authority in conjunction with Act of Municipal Utility District, the Johnson County Special Utility District, and the City of King to take over ownership of the Swat's plant located on Matlock Road, and authorize the mayor to sign that agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Well, the motion from Mr. Hugh, and then a second from Mr. Perkel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposition, the motion passed. Thank you, Mr. English, uh, thank you, Alba.
Appreciate you, Mayor.
We appreciate your hard work, and we'll appreciate, we look forward to a little bit cheaper water. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, consider an approval ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of High Street in the city of Granbury, and authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed, releasing public ownership, interest, and control to this right of way. Uh, do we need any staff input? Are y'all ready to move forward? Let's make a motion.
A move that we accept and approve, uh, the ordinance vacating and banning a portion of High Street in the city of Granbury, and authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed, releasing public ownership, interest, control to this right of way.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Mitch.
Mr. Perkel, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consider an approval resolution opposing the inclusion of Hood County, Texas, on the United States Environmental Protection Agency's air quality non-attainment list. This item was requested by Joey Grisham of the Lake Granbury Area Economic Development Corporation, uh, the United States...
Yeah.
Okay. And Joey can't be here tonight, but the United States Environmental Protection Agency has announced that it will include Hood County in its air quality non-attainment list in its forthcoming updated state plan for Texas. If Hood County is included on this list, it would have serious ramifications on future economic development and job growth. Further, the EPA will install air monitoring devices around the county and require vehicle emission tests during routine inspections. And the EPA is accepting public comments on this issue until January the 15th. Is there any comment from Counsel?
Yes, I've, I've heard about this, reading Hood County news and hearing from staff on it, and I hope that everybody in Hood County and in the city gets together, and we can do everything we can do. We're doing our part here, but firstly, I'd like to see us go down to Austin and stand before, we're, they're going to have these hearings, and let's get, let's, like, sure everybody understands that this is not going to affect the North Texas, that Hood County's not going to, you know, affect the, the quality of air in, in North Texas, and there's some pretty good facts out there. I hope we can all get involved with that and push it forward.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Uh, we accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Allen makes the motion. Mr. Power, seconds. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you want to oppose, motion passes. On to item number seven, to discuss the departure process of Texas Family Musicals' production contract at Granbury Opera House, and thank Mike Skiles for his service to the community. Mr. Manager?
Uh, Mike Skiles is in the audience, uh, we, um, he, uh, they had their last production Sunday, is my understanding, and, uh, we wanted to have him come forward and, uh, talk for a moment about the, the departure of Texas Family Musicals.
Mr. Mike Skiles has been the producer, executive director, head honcho of Texas Family Musicals.
Friend of the neighbor.
Yeah.
Actually, Mick, the other reason I came, I was going to make sure I didn't get appointed to the garbage board that's coming up there. But, uh, you know, we're, we know, our term is up, and, uh, we finished our, our community theater program on Sunday, but we finished our professional program on, uh, Saturday night, and, uh, so it was all good. Uh, you know, our mission is, so you quite understand a little bit, is that we, our mission is that we produce quality Broadway-style, uh, musicals, family, that are family-friendly, but we also, the big factor is that we help launch careers for young professionals. big factor is that we help launch careers for young professionals, that's some of the things that sort of gets going with the wayside, but, you know, what I did, I sort of penciled out some of the people that have come through here and been on the Granbury stage, and that have gone on to other things, so if I could, I'll read this off a little bit. Esther Stillwell, who came here when we did Hello Dolly, she played Miss Malloy, and then since that time, she's gone to Broadway in, starring in Spamalot, and then she's currently in Avenue Q on Broadway. And Allison Spratt, who was with us in, when we did Anna Get Your Gun the first time, she went on to be in Cry Baby, and I cannot think of the current show that she's in, but she's featured, not the star, but she's one of the main people in a current production, I cannot remember. And then Mike Rosenberg, who's with us two years, is now in Rock of Ages on Broadway, a great guitar player, and played in Night the Music Died also, and when we did The Beatles Show, he was one of the Beatles. And then Eric Mann, Ashley Klinger, in Course Line on Broadway, and then was in the Broadway National Tour. And Antoine Smith, you may remember, had played Joseph, he's an African-American young man, was with us three years, actually, he's the lead in Memphis on Broadway, which won a Tony Award, and you may have seen him in the Thanksgiving Day Parade, he was the soloist in that particular show. Chelsea Waller, who I know everybody remembers, was with us three years, an African-American lady that could sing, out sing anybody, she's in Priscilla on Broadway. And the one that we're most proud of is Jeremy Jordan, when we first came here, Jeremy played Richie Valance in the Night the Music Died, and he was with us two years, one year here and one year in Galveston. And Jeremy has got, actually, Colleen Heffernan, who is one of our director's husbands, is the musical director for Avenue, for Rock of Ages, and so he picked up Jeremy, put him into Rock of Ages on Broadway, where he later went on in quickly and was the lead in Westside Story on Broadway, and then he's currently got the lead in the new show Bonnie and Clyde, and he plays Clyde, and, but on top of that, Jeremy will be in a movie that's coming out possibly this weekend called Joyful Noise with Queen Latifah and Dolly Parton, and he plays the lead in that. And I want to tell you a little personal thing, Jeremy called me, I guess back in July, and he was excited about getting the job, and they paid him a little over a million dollars, you know, I told him, well, that's a little bit more than the three twenty-five that you were getting here, but this is one of those stories that, that it just right, because when he was here, his grandmother, and mother, and brother came here on a bus, and we picked him up at the bus at Fort Worth, brought him here, and put him in Dutch's Place down here, and their luggage was Walmart bags, but four years later, this guy's come in, and that's one of those stories that you normally, you know, it just tells you that good things can happen to nice people. So, but these are just the ones that have hit it very good, that have been on the Granbury Opera House stage, and now they're, you know, but we've got a lot more of them that are still in the business. We run a total on our people, and in the past nine years, matter of fact, eighty-eight percent of our people are still in the business. And it's not anything that we do anything about it, I think, because we don't try to educate them on anything, because they come from the best schools in the country, basically what we try to do is build their confidence, and build that, and make them understand that attitude is eighty-eight percent or more of this industry. Talent is great, but that attitude is there. And we have a gentleman that is our Young Professional Development Program Director, who's been in like thirteen Broadway shows, and he sets up various teleconferences with them while they're here, so we work with them and try to bridge that gap between the academic world and the real world. So that's what we, you know, our confidence here has been, and we feel very satisfied it's worked, and then it also allows the Granbury Opera House to be in, right now, six different programs in the yard, or listed in the play fields. So, now, one thing I'm gonna bring to you is, I think I sent a copy of a letter I sent to Wayne, we purchased the costumes here approximately three years ago, something like that, in an effort to try to make sure they stayed in Granbury, because at the time, I believe they were gonna be given away, and then it wound up, I think, the Irving Theater and also a costume shop in Fort Worth, so we purchased them, and, because these costumes, to me, are, is part of the heritage of the Granbury Opera House as anything, and there's a bunch of them, let me tell you, there is a bunch of them, and we cleaned them out as far as getting rid of the rot, getting rid of the ones that are extremely useless, and so they're a concrete group, and what we'd like to do is sell them back to the city, our total cost of them, I believe at the time was fifty-five hundred, we'd like to sell them back for a total of seven thousand, six thousand in lieu of any rents owed, and then a thousand dollars to, paid to the person that's storing them, and then that would totally wipe us out on our account. In addition, what we've got is some things that we're gonna leave here, and as a not-for-profit, I can't, we cannot donate to a government entity, but what we can do is, you know, pack it all up, because there's a list that will give you, not only a rehearsal piano, that's a good one, and then several parkhead lights, probably a good twenty-four that you're gonna be using, those are almost new, and there's several items in there that we just list out, that we just wanna leave here as we leave, but we'll be out by the thirty-first, you know, everything, we've got most of it out, all our kids left yesterday, back home, and it's just up to us to go through and just pick out the little things and stuff like that, and clean it up before they leave, and that's it, so. Other than that, it's been a good, right, we wish the new people all the best, and, you know, if you've been to any of our shows, we've been nothing but telling people, hang in there, because don't forget the Opera House, because we've got six months, that's gonna be down, but it'll come back better than ever. And we'll continue doing that, because as people call us, because we don't wanna spend five years here and have this, have anything for success, because we wanna be a part of that, you know, pass the baton on up, and then we wish them the best, we wish you the best, and we, you know, I'm gonna encourage y'all to support heavy, you know, because they're gonna need it, you know, during this period of time, so it's gonna need everybody getting behind them and making it successful. So this, with all the renovations that I'm reading about, this place could be, you know, a showplace, and just be proud of it and support it, that's all I ask. So, but I'll throw it to y'all for the costumes, but, you know, I'll add one personal thing, you know, I really hope if you get them back, that you'll keep them in Granbury and not form them out to any other theater. That's it.
Thank you. Congratulations to you, Mike, on your high achievement of your goal of having people stay and work in theater, we've certainly enjoyed your productions, I know the community theater people have enjoyed being a part of the show, and we look forward to hopefully continuing a lot of the community theater productions going forward. Mr. Manager, have we had the time to evaluate the costumes and that offer?
Uh, yes, this morning, Andrew and I went over and looked at the costumes, we also looked at the piano, I'd like to ask Andrew to come up, he is, he is our consultant, and he's the expert in our, that we're relying for, I'd like him to make a recommendation on it.
This is Andrew Burrus, he's been hired by the city to help us through the transition phase at the Opera House. Andrew, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Yeah, we and I took the opportunity today to go by and take a look at the costumes, we also took a look at the piano, and yeah, I think that that's absolutely true, there are, it's a large amount of costumes, and it represents a great deal of work from the community over a long period of time, and going forward, I think it's very beneficial for the company, you know, I think that it's well worth the money that's being asked, in addition, the piano's in great shape, I played it a bit today, and it's, it treated well, and I think it'd be very useful. So, from my opinion, I'd say it's very valuable and worth the money.
Appreciate that. Are there any questions for Mr. Burrus? Tony?
No, sir, I've got one for Mr. Skiles, or maybe Andrew might know it, first of all, I thank Mike for the years he's spent here, the time and effort, the great job he done, we appreciate it. The thousand dollars, is that a month, a year, or what is that for the storage?
One time, two years, one time a year, we lost one.
I understand, but I mean, are they still in the storage, Mike?
Yeah, they are.
Okay, how long does that thousand dollars pay the rent for?
Uh, it's a month.
And how much is it per month?
Uh, let me say that as he's out on December thirty-first, we will get a crew over there, and we'll get those, we're gonna move all of those over to the dormitory, there's plenty of room over there, we're gonna exit that building as quickly as possible and get it out of there, so we're not paying rent on the building, and we have adequate storage over in the dormitory.
Alrighty, do you know, Andrew, do you know the list of stuff he's talking about other than the piano and the costumes?
Yeah, well, it's, it's a massive amount at this point, and it's, we're gonna have to take some time to catalog it, inventory it, clean it, organize it, et cetera, and that's, certainly, it's very nice that we do have a dormitory, that we're gonna be able to utilize those rooms, there's plenty of room, right, it is going to take some time and effort to make that happen, but like I said, I think it's very worth the time to make that happen, so yeah, I'd say we, it might be tough to get out of there by the thirty-first, given the holiday, et cetera, but as quickly as we can, you know, we can get out of there and start working on some things.
And it is stuff that we can use in the future.
Oh, absolutely.
Let me add, one day, we had a costumer that owns a costume shop in New York down here this year, I did look at him, what did he earn, you know, he said at least thirty thousand, and we have two offers that are excess of twelve thousand, but we don't sell them, we get them out, so therefore, the value is there, it really is, and so, but, you know, our situation, we're not gonna be doing shows every week, we don't need it, but here, they'll need, it needs to stay here, it's got so much durability in those costumes.
Well, Mike, before you run off, let me say, because I do, I wanna join Mr. Allen, and I'm sorry that we don't have something to present to you, the fact is that you came along at a time and really did some neat things here at the Opera House, and you served this community very well, and I applaud you for that, and just appreciate you so much. You guys are still putting them shows off.
To me, is the cavalry.
We got high hopes for him. Thank you, Mike.
I would like to say one thing, I hope clothes, possibly, are available to make off the ground, so it's much more practical.
Most of them are hanging right now, they're on racks, and we get to keep the racks too, right?
They're mounted and everything.
Yeah, we can, okay, they're on racks right now.
That's my only concern, because nothing destroys things like this.
Yeah, I would say there's five to ten percent of it on the floor, we're gonna get those up, but.
Well, and I can add too, that there's, in addition to all the costumes, there's a lot of millinery, all sorts of hats that are very valuable, all sorts of shoes that are valuable as well, so it runs across the gamut of things, and we'll have to, you know, build some, something to make it work for the hats, and the shoes, and the costumes, additional racks and so forth, but I think there's plenty of room to do it, and I think it's worth a perfect deal.
I just wanna add, like to Councilman Purple said, I did have an opportunity to peek in on some of that, and at first sight, it's kinda like we, there's a lot of stuff that's got maybe ill-do and this and that, but I'm certainly not the expert on buying old clothing and stuff, my wife, she'll go to a garage sale and pay twenty-five dollars for something I'd pay two dollars for, but you are the expert, and I take your word of what some of that costume and stuff like that would be, be worth to the production people, and, you know, that's probably a big savings right there to sell, having that stuff already.
Yeah, well, many of these things are very, very old as well.
Right.
Right, so to preserve them, we're gonna have to put some effort and energy and money and so forth to make, make sure that happens.
Then the question I would have, if we start for management, do we have budget or people in line to do the inventorying and doing that, or is that something we're expecting Mr. Burrus to do?
No, I mean, he is gonna coordinate and help us with the cataloging and everything, but I'm gonna have to sign tasks for that, it's not in the budget, but we will make room for it.
Having said that, I would.
Now, one thing we will have to do, we might have to do a budget adjustment, because we were budgeting that revenue to come in, and now what we're saying, we're gonna take it in lieu of these, so we're not gonna have that revenue, I don't think so, I don't think I'll make a budget adjustment, just know there may be a budget variance there, because we're gonna take these clothes as payment, as opposed to.
Well, Mike, let me ask you, just that you cut a check for seven thousand and swap checks with Mr. Skiles at that point in time, you pay your rent, and you could accept that check, and then you could book up the fixed assets.
Yeah.
But I would entertain a motion from council to approve the expenditure of seven thousand dollars to close up our transactions with Texas Family Musical.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Power makes the motion, Mr. Purple's second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion carries. Now on to number, item number eight, consider, thank you very much, Andrew, appreciate your work, and welcome to Granbury, we're looking forward to the renovation of our Opera House, and it's gonna be exciting to have that reopened, and hopefully in a beautiful, new, clean look. Next is consider appointments to the city boards, we've advertised for applications to serve on our boards, we have a number of boards that we operate, including the Airport Board, which oversees the airport operation, we have Building Standards Board, Cemetery Board that's in charge of the cemetery out at the north side of town, we have a Historic Preservation Commission, a Municipal Utility Advisory Board, which gives us advice relates to utility items, we have a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, a Planning and Zoning Commission, and then we have a Zoning Board of Adjustments that sees and talks about items that may need adjustment from the regular zoning issues, and we also have the Granbury TV Advisory Board. I would accept the nomination to reappoint all people who asked to be reappointed to the boards. Mr. Purple makes the motions to reappoint those who asked to be reappointed to the boards, so I hear a second. During the second, the motion dies, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd like to request that we do it like we've done it in the past, that we go through this, in fact, I think Dee has already got ballots, everybody, that we all put in their names and hand it in, and let her calculate them, and just tell us who the board is, the new board, we've done that before, that's why she has it for us.
Alright, we have an Airport Board, first of all, there's two reappointments there that have been asked to be reappointed, is Mr. Ellis retired from that board, he's signified as a vacancy here, he had requested to get on other boards. Mayor? Okay, alright, so then we're to, where there's someone seeking reappointment, we're considering that an open position now.
Of course. Yes, exactly.
So you have on the Airport Board, you have three people, now then I think staff has prepared you a list of, two different lists, one where the board members requesting reappointment with the boards that they're on, and also a list which details the new applications that they receive, so, first of all, the Airport Board, there are three positions available on that board, so, write them down, is City Manager gonna count?
Airport Board.
Just pass it down this way, or who wants to?
Wayne can do it. Sir, does the mayor vote or not vote in this?
For clarification, can you make your nominations?
Yeah, because we're voting right now.
Well.
Remember, I went through this with the mayor press, I wanna make sure we treat her fair and equal.
What I prefer to do is after you make your nominations, have a total up and down vote on that slate, so the Dee can have a clean record in the minutes, who voted, how you voted.
So, are we gonna vote on each board and commission?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be motion to each one, okay, good, thank you, that's good.
That's how I prefer.
Onto the cemetery board.
So we don't wanna go ahead and fill two of them and give that open, is that possible?
Oh, okay, I see, there's two, yes. Sorry about that.
So at this time, we're gonna fill two of them, less the insurance-
Mm-hmm. Sturridge, does, do you have to live in the city to be an insurance agent?
Yeah.
All right, for the Building Standards Plumbing and Adjustments and Appeals Board, Mr. Pruitt and Mr. Freeson are real, received the most vote for reelection to that board. Can I have a nomination, please?
Who receiving?
Uh, Mr. Pruitt and Mr. Freeson, the two gentlemen that are on the board.
Move that we accept the appointment of the Building Standard Plumbing and Adjustments Board, those two individuals you named.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that board's filled. Now we're down to the cemetery board. We have two terms expiring there, both of which have asked to be reappointed. most votes. I would accept a motion to move that for the approval of those two gentlemen to the cemetery board.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Cemetery board's elected. Now to the Historic Preservation Commission, seeking one, two, three, four people to fill expiring terms, all four of which have asked to be reappointed. most votes. I would accept a motion to move that for the approval of those two gentlemen to the cemetery board.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Cemetery board's elected. Now to the Historic Preservation Commission, seeking one, two, three, four people to fill expiring terms, all four of which have asked to be reappointed. most votes. I would accept a motion to move that for the approval of those two gentlemen to the cemetery board.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Cemetery board's elected. Now to the Historic Preservation Commission, seeking one, two, three, four people to fill expiring terms, all four of which have asked to be reappointed. most votes. I would accept a motion to move that for the approval of those two gentlemen to the cemetery board.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Cemetery board's elected. Now to the Historic Preservation Commission, seeking one, two, three, four people to fill expiring terms, all four of which have asked to be reappointed. There is those, for the cemetery board, John Boozer and David Southern received the most votes. I would accept a motion to move that for the approval of those two gentlemen to the cemetery board.
So moved, Mayor.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Allen, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move our board. The next board up on this list is Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Nine members, two-year terms, chairman and majority must be qualified in the city of Granbury. We have three, three positions opening there, one of which is asked for reappointment. Four members must be owners of a landmark or own property in the historic district. One member may be a member of the Hood County Historic Commission, and this person may live or own property outside of the city. The remaining members must be residents of the city or own real property inside the city. So, once we determine this, I would suggest that we make this nomination subject to the staff vetting the nominees or the people elected to fulfill these requirements. So, we have four. Mr. Wazaluski, Ms. Pennell, Ms. Collarin. Bob Pennell, there you go.
Who were they again, Mayor?
Mr. Wazaluski, Mr. Bob Pennell, Ms. Kay Collarin, and Shirley Hooks.
They're fielded.
Shirley Hooks, Shirley Hooks, yeah.
Mayor, I move if we approve these four individuals for that commission.
Would you please amend that subject to fulfilling the requirements of ordinance ninety-four, four-eighty-three?
Of course, amended.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Carries on to the next one, Municipal Utility Advisory Board. Municipal Utilities Advisory Board, yes, sir. There are one, two, three expiring terms, and all three of those people have applied for reappointment. All right, before the move outboard, we have Mr. Gary Goldstone, Robert Thompson, and Barbara Boozer. entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Yes, first by Mr. Tyra, second by Mr. Allen, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move outboard. The next board up on this list is Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Nine members, two-year terms, chairman and majority must be qualified in the City of Granbury. We have parts and recreation, three positions opening there, one of which has asked for reappointment.
You want me to make it for you?
Okay, for Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, filling three places, Joe Parker, Julie Pennell, and Kay Wazaluski. I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Allen Moose, a second, please?
I'll second.
Few seconds, all in favor of those three appointments to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item up on this list is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Eight members, two-year terms. Must be citizens of the City of Granbury. So, anyone you write on this one must be a citizen of Granbury. On the planning and zoning, we have one vacancy from resignation, and we have four individuals whose term expires at 2011. All four of which have asked for reappointment to that board. We've got a tie-breaking thing again here. Have some sheets of paper, Dee?
Yes.
Planning and zoning. We have one time.
Planning and zoning, one, two. We're after what, five positions? All right, five positions, one, two, three, four, five. We're at five positions, and we have two people ahead, and then one, two, three, four that are at that time, okay?
So after the last position coming, do we have to?
You need to elect three. Is that right, Mr. Nasko? Start last one up. Well, managers, what we have is, we have the full, we have the three vacancies filled. It's the alternate that we're looking, the two alternates that we're looking for. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven names in that list. The city manager is writing those up. While he's writing that up, I guess we'll move to the next one to be voted on is the Granbury TV Advisory Board, which there is one vacancy.
You want to do this one, Mayor? We had it due.
There is only one vacancy on the TV Advisory Board. No expiring terms, so the vacancy is created by resignation. So, we need one nomination for Granbury TV Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, the TV Advisory Board, Mr. Dixie Lee Hetchcock is nominated to that board. I'll entertain a motion to approve Dixie Lee to the Granbury TV Advisory Board.
I said moved.
Moved by Mr. Perkel.
Second.
Tyra, in the discussion, all in favor of that nomination, please say aye.
Aye.
She's pleased on the TV Advisory Board.
We're picking two off to tell these names, correct? Two off each. Take one.
One.
Other's next, other's next.
Circle one.
Mister Robin Ellis.
Circle one. We're down to five for an alternate for the
ZBA. Paper back, let us just mark, don't need to write them back in. We're just gonna circle one now. They got the same names on them.
Well, now, okay, we're down to these five.
Just mark the one, just mark the one and we.
That one's out.
Everybody vote for one person.
So, do we have indicate on that, but who you want?
Even if it's already something, circle it.
Yeah, let's X, put an X inside of one. X, X does.
We're down to two people now, folks.
So, Mr. Tyra has something he wants to talk about. I think he's out of order, but in the sense of fairness, please, Mr. Tyra, address this council.
Nicky, I think it'll be better to bring this up when the agenda is clear, and we'll post it on the agenda as it should be clearly stated. But I sure appreciate you reassuring judging this situation. But bottom line is, we'll put it on the agenda and do it correctly.
Put it on the agenda, I appreciate that, thank you very much. It's not on, in my opinion, it's not on the agenda tonight.
Mayor, I want to say something since everybody's speaking tonight. I think you've done a good job tonight.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Really do, Nicky.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sorry you wouldn't let us talk, that's okay.
You'll make up for it.
Oh, yeah.
You'll get it in, that's fine. As we're telling this last one, I would like to take a little bit of time to thank all of our hard-working employees. We had a great Christmas party last Friday. I thought personally that the Granbury's, City of Granbury Christmas band was beyond phenomenal. Provided great. And I wanted to acknowledge our city employees and the good job they do for us. And I wanted to take a minute to wish all the citizens of Granbury and Hood County a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. I pray that we continue to be, to work together and continue to be the great city that we have been and continue to move forward. So, thanks to each of you that participate in the city government, and God bless. All right, for the ZBA, for the board, we have Mr. Jim Lee, Mr. Jacobs, is that right?
Betty.
Betty Jacobs, oh, Betty Jacobs. And Mr. Ellis for the vacancies on that board. The alternate for that board is Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Southern. Right?
No.
Okay, so we're still, we're still on the alternate, right? Okay, we're still on the alternate, there you go. Two to vote.
You'll vote?
Yeah, you gotta pick one of these. One of those in the box, there you go. So, we filled the vacancies, we're now looking at one additional alternate.
All right, who was, who was the alternate?
Mr. Baker is on, I guess, is that Tom Baker?
Tom Baker.
So, Mr. Baker is there. Gotta be a tiebreaker this time, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, for the zoning board of adjustments, nominated to a full term on that board or a full membership on that board is Mr. Lee, Mr. Ellis, and Ms. Jacobs. The alternates, Mr. Baker and Mr. Southern. Do I have a nomination, or would somebody make that in the form of a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Allen Moose, a second, second from Mr. Perkel. All those in favor of the zoning board of adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We do not have any special meetings tonight. Appreciate everyone's interest and time. There being no further business in front of this council, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.